Make a motion to open tonight's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we're all together in person, so you don't have to state your name and then I, you can just say I. So, I.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. So this will be quick and temporary. The reason I'm sitting here is because we have a vacancy of chair and I'm the vice chair, so we'll just move on very, very quickly. So I figured we would just announce that this meeting is being recorded by Marshfield Community Media, so they'll post this meeting online, so you can watch it anytime that you want, but they're also streaming it live, and you can also watch it live on cable. So we'll just do the pledge of allegiance quickly, and then we'll go out of order on the agenda, and we'll quickly get through the board reorganization. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we had our town election two days ago on Saturday, and the first thing we do every single year is we go ahead and we do a board reorganization. So first, do we have a nomination for the position of vice chair? Does anyone have a preference to be the vice chair? No? All right, I will make a motion to nominate Eric to be our vice chair. Is there a second? All righty, hearing none, I will go ahead and make a motion to nominate Eric as our chair. Is there a second? All right, hearing none, I will make a motion to nominate Trish as our clerk. Is there a second? All right, well, it seems like we have a vacancy across the board. Historically, right, the person in their first year is the clerk, second year is vice chair, third year is chair, but we're welcome to vote and fill it however we see fit. But again, we need to have someone fill these spots, so none of those motions were seconded. All right, I'll make a motion to nominate Eric to be our vice chair. Is there a second? None. I'll make a motion to nominate Eric to be chair of the board. Is there a second? All right. Peter, would you recommend that we put this on the agenda again for a later date?
Are there any further nominations for any offices? If anybody, you want to clarify that, you know?
Are we allowed to have a discussion?
You should, the best way to proceed with the discussion is to place somebody's name and nomination first, and then have a second of it, and then there can be purposes of discussion. That doesn't obligate anyone to vote for the person that's nominated and seconded, it just allows to facilitate the discussion.
Okay. Then I nominate Eric for chair.
Second. All right, so now we'll go ahead and vote. Aye.
What about discussion?
Oh, you want to discuss it?
Yeah, now there's purposes of discussion. You can discuss at this point. It's been made and seconded, you can have discussion.
Okay.
Am I allowed to talk?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I just feel like I'm in a very difficult position here because I feel like I cannot in good conscience nominate Mr. Darcy because of the way he has treated our residents in the past, and also he has been going through some personal issues, and I'm afraid that this might take away from him being chair, his responsibilities. And I do have some reservations with Eric being chair in the fact that talking to a lot of the residents, they're not happy with the way he has voted in the past. And, you know, I know also the playground was a top, a hot topic the other night at town meeting, and I just, I was a little concerned because the people that had done all the legwork were very disappointed when, you know, he stood up at that point to have more discussion. So I guess I'm kind of at a crossroads here if it's up to me.
Okay. Do you have any discussion points, Eric?
As regards to me, no, I mean, I'll leave it up to you to figure out.
Okay. All right, so the motion was seconded to make Eric the chair. We've had, everyone's made their piece with their discussion, so I'll go ahead and vote aye.
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 Okay. All right, awesome. So we have Eric as our new chair, and after we're through this, we'll just go ahead and rotate where we're sitting, so it's in accordance. All right, so does anyone want to make a motion for vice chair?
Make a motion, Steve Darcy is vice chair.
All right, second. Any discussion? Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and vote aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. So, I mean, by default, that would make Trish the clerk, but I'll go ahead and make a motion to nominate Trish as our clerk. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
None.
Nope? Okay. So I'll go ahead and vote aye.
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 Okay. So I want us to take a minute to reshuffle our seats, and then Eric can go through the rest of the agenda as he sees fit, so. Uh, thanks, Kate. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Steve.
Hey. This is familiar.
Oh, thank you so much. Okay, so Steve covered, uh, let's see, five, six.
Want to get to the public hearing, number 10?
Yes, there we go, number 10. Uh, all right, there's a public hearing for liquor license here and under general laws, chapter 138, for seasonal wine and malt beverages to be sold offsite. Um, it says read the public hearing. Is this the notice itself?
Public hearing notice will be under the appointment in your books.
I thought you did.
Do you want me to read it?
Uh, no, I can read it. I'm good. Um.
Are you not doing public comments?
Get to it after this. We've got this scheduled for 6:35, and by law, you've got to do that. Get that out of the way, and then we'll go to, I'm sorry.
So on February 27, 2025, the Office of the State, whoops, sorry, that's the wrong one.
Oh, I can do it.
What is that?
Notice is here about given under chapter 138 of the Massachusetts general laws, is amended there. Will be a public hearing on Monday, May 5, 2025, at 6:35 in the select board chamber at Marshfield Town Hall, 870 Moraine Street, Marshfield 02050, on the application for a seasonal wine and malt beverages package store license for South Shore Provisions LLC, DBA, South Shore Provisions, Maureen Coleman manager, premises located at 1849 Ocean Street, Unit 4, Marshfield, Mass. Marshfield licensing, select board, Lynn Fidler at the time, Chair, Stephen Darcy, Eric S. Kelly.
So does anybody, oh, so did you read everything off, Peter, in regards to needing to be ready for the record, or do we got to go through this?
Yes, that's read for the record. Now you would hear from the applicant as to, you know, why he is, or she is applying for the license. The board can then ask any questions that they want, and then at the end of the hearing, the board would close the hearing and deliberate as to whether the public convenience and common good would be served by the issuance of the new license.
Okay, so is the applicant or applicants present?
Yes.
Can you come up front here, please? How are you doing today?
Very well, how are you?
Good, thank you. So if you give us in the public a general overview of what you're looking for, that'd be gratefully appreciative.
Sure. My name's Tom Coleman, this is Maureen Coleman, my wife. We operate and own Live Creative Cuisine over in Library Plaza currently. We're attempting to open boutique grocery store, basically based on the same values that we have at Live Creative Cuisine currently, which is, you know, farm-to-table, organics, biodynamics, all the things that try to make this world a better place. In doing so, we thought that the wine and beer seasonal license would help us kind of draw people in. People aren't just going to stop in just to grab some fruit and vegetables probably. So this is going to be a one-stop-shop for folks that don't want to stand in line at the grocery store necessarily.
Is there anything else you'd like to add, Maureen, or?
I mean, yeah, I think you covered it. It'll be doing, focusing on locals too, like doing local farmers, having some produce there, like doing some, we wanted to focus on also, like, kind of giving back to the community as far as doing some sort of, something with the food pantry we discussed, just kind of making it community.
A place for people to go, they feel really good about shopping.
Yeah.
And you can get those, some of those one-off things you might not find in the grocery store, but is very particular to a certain clientele.
And a little niche, like the liquor and beer wouldn't be like anything you could find anywhere.
We're supporting the local breweries, of course, but also the biodynamic, sustainable, and organic wine segment is not really represented well in a lot of liquor stores in this area in particular.
There's, um, seasonal, what is, what's the seasonal?
April 1st to December 31st.
April 1st, December 31st?
And the only reason is we, I talked to the select board initially to find out if they were available regularly, and they are. If one came available, it was year-round, we'd apply for it, obviously, but I don't think one is right now. So we figured this is a good way to start.
All right, so there's going to be, like, four months that you wouldn't be able to use this.
Correct.
Is your, you plan on having your business open?
Year-round, yeah.
Year-round?
Yeah.
You're trying to use that as just a draw to get people on the door, you're saying, as well, you know?
Absolutely. I think, especially with the population, the way it grows in the summertime, and folks have rentals, they're here for a week, you know, they want to stop in and get, get things in a smaller scale maybe for their rental, but they also can shop for their beer and their wine while they're there. We'll have grab-and-go food, focusing on charcuterie and cheese boards, you know, all those things that people might want to bring back to the Wrexham Beach Cottage and really enjoy themselves for their week.
It was, um, I mean, my concern, I, I stated before, in regards, we had this situation before us, I think somebody had a seasonal, but then they got the full, full license, you know, for all year-round, and especially where you're located, we have quite a few package stores in town, and, and will potentially adding another one. In my look at is that, you know, is this, is there room for competition in my, the way I look at it, without impacting everybody else?
Mm-hmm.
And gratefully appreciated that you guys are trying to, uh, open up another business and cater to, uh, the community in regards to certain things and all that. I'm just wondering how much of an impact if we hand this, even though it's seasonal, but it's pretty much most of the year in regards to how much it may impact the other businesses in town. Have you talked to the other businesses in town at all in regards to this?
No, I'm pretty close with, I'm pretty close to Max across the street at, from where we are at Marshfield Liquors, but that's really the only, would be the only competition, but he's not going to be selling what we sell. A lot of times, we've brought stuff into the restaurant and kind of marketed it for smaller producers, and then he gets wind because people come in and ask for it, and he starts carrying it. It's almost, it's very cyclical, like, we're, we're all helping each other out. I don't think what I'm going to be selling at the store necessarily is going to have, he probably won't have any of that at his store in a retail setting because of the very, it's going to be very niche, and it's not like we're going to have a huge space. Talking about 12 reds and 12 whites, you know, as far as wine goes, and it's only beer and wine. There's no liquor, we're not going to impact that sale at all, and the majority of what he does is liquor. But the beer thing too, is it just, it's local breweries, we're not, we won't be selling Bud Light, you know, we're not going to be selling.
Oh, so you're going to be?
It's very specific.
All right, so you're not, you're not looking to, like you said, sell a variety much like a package store?
No.
Trust me when I tell you, the stuff that we're going to have on the shelf, no one's going to have in Marshfield.
Okay.
Guaranteed.
All right.
It's just, we're very particular in what we sell already at the restaurant, and that, that's kind of how we like to run a business.
And, all right, so there's going to be four months that you can't sell, so how will those products be secured in regards to not being?
We'll blow out the inventory and, as they not sit on the money, and it'll be gone by December 31st.
Okay, so you're not, you're not going to have any inventory?
I'm not, no. It's, to me, to me, it's wasted money on a shelf.
Correct. With all that product, they're not going to be able to sell it. I would agree with that. There were some, on the applications, when I was going through it, there were some things that weren't filled out, maybe you can help me out here as to the reason why. Source of financing, please provide signed financial document, that'll be page four. The, 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 the name of lender amount, type of financing, and then is this a lender of licensing pursuant, mass general 138, so are you not, no financial?
No, I actually did, I did bring a copy of a check. All I had was basically a check from a private source, who's a state trooper in Massachusetts, lives down the street, be a good friend, and he, that was the source of the, what we needed to get outside help.
Peter, what do you think on that?
I think that's adequate. I think he showed, showed, rather than a loan document or a mortgage, he showed actual cash financing that he had, which kind of goes beyond what the requirement is, so he's demonstrated what his financing is.
So, does he need to fill this, do you think it needs to be filled out at all?
I think it's fine.
He's good on that one?
Yep.
All right, and then number nine, the pledge information, um, on page four as well, does that need to be, should that have been filled out, you know?
You're not pledging your, your, if.
I don't think I understood the question originally.
So a pledge is when, if you have either pledge, this is an application for a new license, so pledging is usually when the license is pledged to someone else as collateral for, for a loan. You haven't pledged your business certificate to anyone?
No, no.
Yeah, so I think.
So should you have checked off no on it, at least anyway?
Yeah, you probably could have checked off no, but it's.
I, I think I meant to go back to it, I didn't understand what it was asking.
I think, I think he's good.
And then number, on page five, um, on the bottom, it asks for manager's signature. Should they have signed that?
Yep. Oh, so we just need Maureen's signature, that's my fault.
So Peter, if you don't mind, uh, so, let me see, all right, so number nine, the pledge, probably should have been filled out, no. Then, page five, the manager's signature. That should have been, uh, signed, and. Peter, on, not page six, um, existing management agreements and interest in alcoholic beverages license, should that have been filled out, or at least stated a yes or a no on it?
It could say no, yeah, it should say.
Say no?
Yep. Because you don't own any others, you're not a party to any other.
So 11B?
Existing license for an alcohol.
Retail, no. Uh, we have a restaurant that has a, but not a wholesale license or a retail license. It's a pouring license, yeah.
Okay, so he has, so that would be yes, actually.
So he should be checking that off as a yes?
Yeah, that should be yes.
And, oh, page seven, this page has been clearly overlooked, it looks in my opinion. Should that have been filled out?
Previously held interest, did you, yeah. Um, have you ever, did you ever hold another license before the, besides the one that you currently have?
No.
Okay, so that would just be no. You never had any disciplinary action, you never, yeah, so. 10, 11, or 11C, 11D, and 11E should, should be answered.
So that page should have been filled out for the most part?
Yeah.
Um, and then page after, that is signed. I think everything else looked good, I think it, oh, you know what the other thing was on this that I noticed? How, how, Peter, how clear does a license need to be shown on the photocopy, because the license that was provided, I think, yeah, Maureen, um, you cannot even make out the image, so does that need to be shown more clearly?
Well, I think it demonstrates that they provided it. For our own records, we'd probably want to take another copy, but it shows clearly that they, they provided it when it was requested.
All right, so, um, provide another copy of license?
Yeah. Just, yeah, we'll just get a better photocopy of it, that's all.
And. I think, I think that might have been it, in regards to everything I had concerns with. Let me just go through and make sure, like, anything checked off. I guess the one other question I was wondering, because you do have a business, not too far away from it, um, I don't know what the state laws are and all that, but are you planning to use this business in conjunction with Live in regards to alcohol, like?
No, it's, yeah, it has to be a separate license. We actually, that's why we opened another corporation and not umbrella it, they're completely separate.
Completely separate, so there's no alcohol.
No cross utilization.
Okay. Some questions here provided was, uh. What is your, you know, there's one thing I don't think I saw in here, is what are your hours going to be?
Tuesday through Saturday, 10 to 6. I'm pretty sure that was listed somewhere in the application.
10 to 6?
Tuesday through Saturday, yeah.
All right. Um, and obviously, you're in the business, so you know the rules in regards to selling to minors or not.
Yeah, yeah, we, most of our staff in the restaurant had taken the course with Lieutenant Shaw five years ago.
Do you have any, did you talk to the police, fire, border health, or anybody in regards to this, or?
Oh, yeah, we've, we've been spending a lot of time over here. I was actually in the border health the other day. He's like, you know, Nick's a great guy, and he, I want to make sure we're doing the right thing by him, so he's going to do his final walkthrough, I think, probably this week.
Okay, uh, but.
And I talked, I talked, I had to do a sketch for Andrew at the building department. I, I think I have to have another conversation with him, but I'm pretty sure we're all set there.
Okay, so everybody seems to be on board?
Yeah, it seems that way, yeah.
All right. Um, okay, I think that's all I have. Steve, do you have any questions for him?
Yes.
Thank you. You touched on earlier some of the unique offerings that you would have at your package store that would differentiate you from what's already around in Marshfield. Could you just offhand mention a few of the brands that you would carry that nobody else has?
A lot of the stuff we will be making in-house, so, you know, we have a, it's like a, similar to a deli area, like, we make house-made kimchi all the time. Now, that's not for everybody, but there are part of the population out there that loves kimchi, and it's really good for gut health, so we like, try to promote things like that along those lines. We happen to know people that own Taz Chocolate, that have the big, they have a contract with Whole Foods, but it's nice to have a little display on the counter that has the Taz Chocolate, that's like the best chocolate in the world, you know, from Brazil. There's, you know, anything along those lines, small producers, made well, fewer ingredients, fewer miles traveled, that's what we're trying to do. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, good questions. Lynn, do you have anything to add?
I'm Trish.
I mean, I apologize for Trish, do you have anything to add?
Shoulder pads. I'm sorry. No, it sounds good.
Thank you.
Um, all right, does anybody from the public have anything to add?
I'd like to add something.
Sure thing.
I'm J.J. McPherson.
Can you just step to the podium there so people can pick you up on the mic? Thank you.
J.J. McPherson, Tumble Fund Gymnastics. Uh, thank you guys all for being here, congratulations, Trish.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, so I was able to work with the town over the summer, fantastic job. Thank you guys for doing a great job, as always. Two words that I can, you know, mention in Tom and Maureen's presence is perseverance and innovation. They've demonstrated those words over and over and over and over and over again, and as far as local business owners, you want them equated with those words, perseverance and innovation. And again, I drove through central Florida over vacation, and again, it might have been the four days at Disney or the 120,000 steps, but as I was driving by, alls I could see in every single town was just the glow of the Dollar General. So, not that Dollar General isn't wonderful, but I think that these guys are getting away from the Dollar General, and we're very, very lucky to have them in the town. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, J.J.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the general public have any comments in regards to this? I see none. Uh, I want to add that on something Steve brought up, I've, I've heard an awful lot about a kimchi in regards to its benefits and all that, so, uh, it's, uh, be interesting when you open to go in and find out more about it, so.
Great.
So I suggest everybody, in my opinion, uh, to take a walk in, when you eyes open and find out more about it, it seemed like a pretty interesting, uh, product, in my opinion, especially with gut, uh, gut health, so. Um, seeing that, we're to close the, um, close this hearing?
Yeah, the next motion would be to close the public hearing and then proceed to a vote.
Okay, so, take a vote to close this hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I want to hear that second, take a vote to close the hearing. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, so are you ready to take a vote on this?
Yes.
All right, so I will, um, ask to take a vote on this matter. Do I have a second?
Second.
We're just, um, just so that, that, I just want to make sure.
Oh, you know something? Do we have to put any of my concerns in, in regards to what needs to be on the, the motion?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that you, you follow the motion as recommended by council.
Did council put a motion in, because I don't?
He did not.
Yeah, all right, you're seeing that as well.
Correct.
All right, let me just. So you would move to approve the license, the application for the temporary seasonal license, um, as contained in the application submitted?
Can you repeat that, Peter, please?
You would move to approve the application for seasonal wine and malt beverages.
Oh, is this it?
Package store license for South Shore Provisions, DBA South Shore Provisions.
All right, Kate was kind enough to highlight it where we can go off it. So do we need to insert things that need to get taken care of in the paperwork?
So would you, would you condition the motion on satisfactory completion of the paperwork as noted during the hearing?
Okay, so let's see if I can get this right here. Um, so I make a motion to vote, to vote in favor of, or to vote, uh, the application for a seasonal wine and malt beverage pack store license for South Shore Provisions LLC, DBA South Shore Provisions, Maureen Coleman manager, premises located at 1849 Ocean Street, Unit 4, Marshfield, Massachusetts, 02050, with conditions. with conditions satisfactory completion of paperwork. Do I have to state what the paperwork is or?
No, you've already established that during the hearing.
Okay, so I will motion for a second on that?
Second.
Second, I will vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Forward to having a successful opening going on from there, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If you come in, we'll point out.
When do you expect to open? Oh, can I ask?
When you come in, we'll point out where you have to fill out a couple of those things.
Very good.
When do you think it'll open?
Hopefully by the end of the month.
Oh, okay. Good luck.
Hopefully.
Good luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so the appointments are done.
So you want to go back to?
Thank you.
Do you?
Thank you.
Take care. I think you're coming.
You want to go to public comment?
Do you have a town administrator's report to give?
I would defer that to the recommend, or the update on the financial situation. I'll ask for that to serve as my report.
Okay, all right. So all right, we'll roll into the public comments. I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people, I believe, on this. The first one is Diane Jordan. Diane, are you available?
I am.
Just please just state your name and address, please.
Diane Jordan, Bancroft Street, Chair of Board of Public Works. So I just wanted to be here in person as opposed to Zoom, which I'll leave and go do, to say congratulations to our new select board member, Trish Simpson. I just, I really appreciate that Trish expressed her intention to value and support the town departments, especially the Department of Public Works. And I'm looking forward to a new level of cooperation between the Select Board and Public Works and with positive cooperative functional communication. And I promise to do my part to do everything, you know, to help make that happen on my end and so our two boards can work together effectively for the good of Marshfield. So congratulations and have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. I have Laurie Sweeney. Is Laurie Sweeney available? Name and address when you get up there, Laurie, please.
Thank you. Laurie Sweeney, 119 Marginal Street, Marshfield. Congratulations on your new role and Eric, your role. My question is this, and Trish brought it up when you were doing your musical chairs on the chair and moving around, and Trish had concerns about Stephen Darcy. So I thought Mr. Galvin might be here this evening, but I guess he is not. So a couple of things came to mind to me for this. You know, and we've heard rumors that people would like to see him removed because of unbecoming contact or behavior. So I've talked to the state in great detail about this and whether it's a conflict of interest. It was not on work time. And I guess what I would like to say to the entire board, if that is a route you're planning to go down, then you are setting a precedent. And that precedent is and will be applied to every employee, every person appointed or elected in the future and even in the past. So I would say that everybody could have a background check done, and they would have to be asked to be removed as well. And also, an arrest is not a conviction. And moving forward, doing something like that to an elected official will open this town up to yet one more lawsuit. So I don't know who's feeding the crowd on all this information. It's wrong. It's illegal, and I think it should stop. You cannot remove a board member without a recall or an impeachment. And it is a very difficult thing to do. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Laurie, for those comments. Kathy Gasper, I think? She did leave?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Maureen and Tom, but I don't think, I think they were just going to speak on their own thing, I imagine, right?
They'll come back if they want.
David Coniff, if I'm saying it right? School Street? No, Outlook Road, I should say.
Carrier.
Was it Ca- oh, Carrier, okay. I couldn't read the last name the way you wrote it today, so.
David Carrier, 34 Outlook Road. I just wanted to provide this board some information that I have spoken to Mr. Shaughnessy about with regard to the unpaid private ways and future funding. Back in 2024, in preparation for the town meeting, at that time, I had done some examinations. I got a full download of all of the streets and roads that had unpaid portions or full unpaid portions on them. They amounted on the assessed value of the tax, by the Board of Assessors, some $273 million odd dollars, okay? Out of that, when you break it down on the dollars per thousand, that means you're looking at a tax rate on a group of properties that are in excess of $3.5 million. The $70,000 that was being asked at the time represents 1.9% of that amount just for basically enough money at that time to pave, you know, twice maybe on the unpaved roads. I was approached at the end of the town meeting by Steve Contos, who lives on one of the unpaved roads. He's the one that I worked with at request admission of the meeting at the next Public Works meeting. My recommendation through Steve is going to be that, you know, the property, the value of the and the amount of money that's necessary for the unpaid private ways and also the frequency should be based basically on a fixed percentage of the assessed values and taxation of those properties. You know, we're talking about an awful lot of money, and while the unpaid private ways are, in fact, private property, therefore, you have to still have the vote at town meeting. Having a funding process that actually establishes it and moves it with basically the change in tax rate and inflation, to me, is the appropriate way to approach it and kind of makes the amount of money that would or would not be used as a pro forma thing so that the advisory board and the select board, you know, won't be the constantly questioning, why are we doing this type of thing, which has always been the case year to year. And, you know, I just wanted this board to be as aware of the procedure that's just going to be discussed with the Public Works Board.
Thank you, Dave. Mr. Jim Cantwell.
Eric, thank you very much, and just wanted to come down tonight. Congratulations.
Hold on, Jim, can you just state your name and address?
Jim Cantwell, 103 Tilden Road here in Marshfield. Just briefly wanted to congratulate Trish Simpson. I don't know that we've met before, but congratulations on this amazing job and opportunity to contribute to our town. Congratulations, Erica, on your being elected to be the chair here tonight. Look forward to seeing you around the Tilden Road neighborhood with all the great work that you do. And I credit my great friend Steve here for your public service, Steve, for all that you do to make our town a better place. In fact, all three of you for taking the responsibility to promote what's best for our community. It's a lot of work, and we look forward to seeing you all working very closely together. Reason why I came was really to talk about that, because the public, they want all of us to continue to work together despite some differences we may have. I said, Steve, Lynn, and I just were talking. Every time I go to town meeting, Steve and I sit side by side. I did it tonight. We don't always agree, but we always get along, and we always find ways to, even though we'll have differences of opinion. And the one story, Barbara Carney, who maybe many of you will know, Barbara Carney and I have been now not quite lifelong friends. But Barbara and I met years ago. She was the chair of the Republican Town Committee when I was the chair of the Democratic Town Committee. And we fought hard on different campaigns time and again. In one year, her candidate won, Bob Hedlund, defeated other folks, whatever, and I was working at the State House. So when she came for her first day, I had a whole big box of all these cases that were open cases that people needed help. And I made sure I handed those to her because we wanted to make sure people were taken care of. Two years later, Brian McDonald defeated Bob Hedlund. I was coming in to help, and she had different files, right, for people. And we both laughed, saying, that's what it's all about, right? It's to be there to help people, because that's the job that you all have. And just credit tonight for the professionalism that you're all having. By the way, I want to add, when we talk about that kind of thing with Barbara Carney, even though we'd worked against one another for years, there became a time when a developer was going to tear down the home of Daniel Webster. You see here, our seal says Marshall, Home of Daniel Webster. And despite our having had differences before, we came together and worked really, really hard to preserve that estate. And it's something that we've now become the closest of friends. I called during the way down. And I hope for you all for tonight and the spirit for other people coming forward, let's put the town forward first. We have a lot of challenging things that are coming forward. Peter Moran, I've known for many years. A credit, Peter, for you being here to help the town through. Kate does an amazing job. I'm just thrilled to be able to come back. I've never been in this room, actually, but to come back to be able to say, you know, congrats to you all. Thank you for your public service and look forward to great things to come with your working together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, for those comments. John Bowes. Is John Bowes available?
Left.
He did leave?
No.
Okay. All right, that's.
May I request, I didn't put my name down, but I just wanted to respond in a calm and straight, if possible. It's going to be good.
And whose comment are you talking about?
Ms. Sweeney.
All right, I'll let it ride. Go ahead. What's the name for the public record? Name and the address?
Madeline Daly, 5 MacArthur Lane. I just want to state that at no point in any time did anybody I know or was associated with, you know, spoke about anyone's personal life or any personal situation that they had going on. We had 100% respect for people's personal life and didn't touch it, didn't go near it. We were glad that everyone was well. There was no injuries. And we, you know, we only care, we have a saying, within us, family and well-being first. And we extend that to everyone, regardless of political differences, regardless of any disagreements we may have. We always believe family and well-being first. So anything that was said, it definitely did not come from anyone I know or was associated with. And there is no way ever I would wish any harm on somebody's personal life or anyone I know. And I would not be friends with them if they ever wished harm on somebody's personal life. So I just want to say, we always wish family and well-being for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Okay, let's see. Do you want to take care of the town administrator update on budget revisions there, Peter?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. I want to start by thanking everyone that I have met since assuming the position of interim town administrator, both the residents and the department heads, the staff in the Select Board's office, and for the board itself. It has been, everyone has been unanimously helpful and courteous to me, you know, since I started here almost three weeks ago. So what I've done and what I have for you tonight is an update on where I am with proposed adjustments to the budget and to articles to meet the budget issue that has been presented. And that is namely finding the $750,000 for the VOGTEC budget and finding a way to incorporate that into the operating budget for FY '26. What I'm offering at this point, and I'm not asking for a board vote at this point because I just want to initiate the discussion and then get feedback on what is being proposed and come back after listening to department heads, residents, and the board, and come back with hopefully a consensus on the direction that we can take. I'm offering a total of $805,276 worth of amendments, $735,276 of which involve free cash articles. The remaining $35,000 would come from department budget adjustments. These numbers, you know, may change a little bit here and there. But the areas in which I wish to address won't, you know, at this point, are solid. So the first area of adjustments would be to special town meeting article six. And there are several, there are a number, there's over 20 subcomponents of that article, and I'm suggesting to change several of them. The first is 6-6, the vaccine deficit. There was a coding error incorrectly categorizing flu vaccines as COVID vaccines, and so the funding source was incorrect. This deficit is approximately $11,000, and it can be corrected through the use of available CARES Act funds instead of using free cash. There is in section eight of article six, there's $284,000 identified for police accreditation. That item was inadvertently included in the article and can be reallocated to the VOGTEC budget with no impact on the delivery of services at all. On subsection 6.7, the Munis Software article sought $370,000. The amount can be reduced to $340,000 to cover only contractual obligation and remove ancillary software-related costs from it. There's a request for $200,000 to fund other post-employment benefits or OPEBs that would be added into the OPEB trust. I would reduce that to $50,000. Marshfield will still be adding to its OPEB trust, while many communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are not adding to their trust. Municipal auditors and rating agencies are primarily concerned that pension obligations be met first. And they're acknowledging that pension assessments are going up at a higher rate than revenues and a higher rate of growth than any other part of municipal budgets. And therefore, it's presently unreasonable to expect substantial funding of OPEB as it may have been done in the past. Marshfield, like the vast majority of communities, plans to fund OPEB through a pour-over once its pension obligation is met in the early 2030s. So reducing the funding from $200,000 to $50,000 will not hurt its rating, its budget rating for borrowing or anything like that. There's an appropriation for security camera servers that can be replaced by CARES Act money. That's $24,000 we could save. There's a vehicle lease program in section 618 that would be funded with $250,000 in free cash. The goal of the lease program is to more systematically replace aging vehicles in our fleets. That's a laudable goal, but it's worth exploring if the program could be established through use of the consortium purchasing that the state uses or through a community compact grant funding a regional pilot program which would not require a third-party administrator and achieve the same fleet management goals. If a more effective alternative can't be identified, we could revisit this at a future town meeting. There is a request for $21,276 for supplemental funding for a skate park CPC project. But in light of competing interests, I think it would be better put to use to fund the VOGTEC. There are two remaining areas that I would adjust in the operational budget lines, the proposed operational budget for FY '26. One is a proposed reduction in the town administrator's salary line of $15,000. I'm suggesting that for two reasons. One, I am under contract for at least six weeks into the next fiscal year. I am cheaper than what you would be paying market for a town administrator because I'm part-time and retired and limited in what I can charge. So you can reduce the amount that you're setting aside for my successor for that portion of the fiscal year with no impact on services. The second area I'm suggesting is to reduce the insurance appropriation by $20,000. The town's insurer recently awarded rebates for FY '25 premiums that could be applied to the FY '2026 billing. And this allows for the reduction in the appropriation. That results in $805,000 plus of freed-up resources to address the $750,000 VOTEC budget. The remaining $50,000 I would propose should be put towards the unemployment appropriation, which was zeroed out in an effort to provide additional funding to address the school department's needs. I think it's not wise to go with a zero in the unemployment appropriation as it's a recurring expense that annually, while it is unpredictable how much it'll be used, it's always drawn on. So some funding should be put in that line to go forward in FY '26. I'm happy to answer questions on this this evening. I'm happy to answer them in subsequent meetings. The advisory board has asked if it would be possible for the select board and the advisory board to have a joint meeting in preparation for town meeting on May 20. And I think that would be a good night to try to have our plan solidified so that both the advisory board and the select board could move forward on a united front to go into town meeting with a joint recommendation. So thank you again for your patience, for your support. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Did you have, do you have this written up? Because it's one thing I don't think I saw.
Yeah.
It wasn't added in.
It should be the second thing, the second tab in. If you don't have it, I can give you a copy.
Oh, I got it right, yeah. Okay. I was actually looking at number one, that was my problem. All right. They all seem good. So the, in regards to these recommendations from you, do we as a board have to vote on them? Or is this going to have to be something done at a town meeting?
So you would, I would, I think it makes the most sense for you to not vote on this tonight, to take a look at it because you're seeing it for the first time this evening. Take a look at it. You can come individually for more explanations. We can revisit it in the next meeting or in a meeting after that, however you want to do it. Any residents can raise issues that they may have or raise any questions with me. I'm here Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4:30. You know, you can email me if that's not convenient. You know, but eventually, I would say, I think a good target would be if we could have a vote by May 20 as to, you know, identifying any changes to these proposals, any additions, any deletions, any other ideas that we incorporate and have our guidance or our recommendation to, you know, ready for town meeting by about the 20th of this month.
I mean, these are already articles with the numbers already posted into it for either special time meeting or regular time meeting, right?
Correct.
So is it appropriate for us to, as a board, even to vote on it? Or do we have to make adjustments at special time meeting?
No, you would vote on, so what this would do, you would vote on a recommendation.
That's it.
And it would be similar, it could be, you know, it would be laid out like this, how we get to the 750.
Yep.
And so the board would vote, the advisory board would vote, make their recommendation. And then the information would be provided for town meeting. It would be incorporated into the budget article motion so that adjustments to where the money would be allocated would be made. We would, what we would be doing is increasing the amount for the overall budget, I believe. And then the article recommendations would change.
All right. I mean, Steve and Trish, do you guys have any questions right now? Do you want to wait till we have the select board advisory board meeting to pursue it? Or you ask on your own? I mean, it's up to you what you want to do. If you have questions now, please feel free to ask, so.
No, thank you. Yeah, maybe just one or two quick questions or comments. So Peter, thank you for doing this and kind of getting creative with how you work through it. And these all look like things that'll hold up with no issue. Your dad was an accountant, right?
Yeah, my father was an accountant.
And how would he feel about the work you put into this?
I don't know. I checked my math. But no, I think it's, you know, what I was trying to do is to make it as least, I wanted to show as much respect for the work that had been done in creating the budget as I could and as least disruptive to the proposed funding for the town's priorities as I could. And I think this does it. And, but I, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, everyone has an opportunity to be heard on this before we move forward.
Yeah. And when we get to town meeting in June, is the smoothest way to go about this is a RADA sheet? Because there would be so many amendments involved?
Yeah. There would be not only just a sheet of where the changes are, but why. And because I think we want to, we want to not just say, okay, this is a change, this is a change. We're making this change because. And basically, you know, outline why we're doing what we're doing and how it's being achieved. So I would explain how much we need to fill, what the budget gap we need to fill, the proposals on how to do it and the procedural mechanisms, what motions will change and what you'll be voting on and where it will be reflected. So everybody will know, you know, as I said to Trish earlier, how the sausage is made. We'll all see it. Everybody will have an opportunity to say, you know, this makes sense. This, I think it'd be better looking here. Have you thought of this? You know, so, you know, I'm happy to, you know, to lay that out. I would also want to thank Lynn and Sean, or Meg and Sean, for the work that they've done on helping me go over these and make sure that I'm right in how I'm approaching it. Their assistance through this whole thing has been invaluable.
Awesome. We might have to find a third person to call Lynn tonight. Our recording secretary is Lynn. She's great.
We're still early. Still early.
Still early, yeah.
Thanks, Peter. And just the last question I had is, I know the top priority was filling in that gap with the South Shore VOTEC money. And I don't want to go beyond the scope of what you're prioritizing. But is there anything else you think would be worthwhile to reallocate to something else as an important priority?
At this point, no. I think it's, I think the best thing we can do right now is to keep things simple and focus on the primary problem that we have, which is namely funding VOTEC. The secondary problem that I noticed, you know, I think it's imprudent to go in with a non-funded unemployment line. And, but beyond that, I don't think we should, you know, be revisiting things that haven't gone through the normal process if it's not necessary to do so. I'm just, I'm just trying to keep it as understandable and transparent as we can.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good.
I think you've done a great job finding money. I did mention to you about the CPC and if we would be reopening the warrant and possibly reducing that for the taxpayers. You had said that's a possibility. Is that something that we can do?
So what we talked about was the assessment or the CPC assessment. There is a process, I believe Marshfield adopted it for a 3%, which is the maximum that you can, that you can do. It's too late to do for this town meeting. But what we could do is begin the process. And I don't know if we can do it at a special town meeting. I don't know whether it needs a ballot as well. But I'll be happy to get for you the process by which the community can look at reducing the percentage of CPC. You know, you can adopt it at 1%, 2% or 3%. And right now, your buckets are full. And there are many communities that are revisiting at this point because, you know, we've addressed a lot of, a lot of our needs. Our tax bills are going up. This is one way we could provide some relief. So I'll be happy to provide you with the mechanism by which you'd be able to do that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, and everybody. So I'm going to, I'm going to move on to, I guess, another important one. And that'll be number three. And that is request for waiver of timeline under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 29, Section 27(c) regarding mandate determination request related to MBTA Communities Act, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 3a. So do I read the whole, the whole kit and caboodle here, Peter?
No, what I can basically do is I can summarize this for you. If you want, Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to do it.
You know, son, it's not that bad. Let me just read the whole thing off and then we'll go from there. So on February 27, 2025, the Office of the State Auditor received an email letter on behalf of the Town of Marshfield requesting a determination of compliance with the MBTA Communities Act would constitute an unfunded mandate under the law pursuant to ruling on Methuen and Rentham. On February 21, 2025, OSA, through its Division of Local Mandates, issued determinations to Rentham, Middleboro and Methuen pursuant to DLM statutory obligation under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 29, Section 27(c), the local mandate law, that Mass. General Law, Chapter 48 and 3a, MBTA Communities Act, the Act or Section 3a constitutes an unfunded mandate. Said determination set forth DLM's analysis and arrived at the conclusion that the Act constitutes an unfunded mandate while noting that additional time is required to form a thorough analysis of requests received by DLM regarding the MBTA Communities Act. According to DLM, incorporates analysis herein is reference to said determination as well as DLM's conclusion that the Act is an unfunded mandate within the meaning of the local mandate law as the current method of funding by the Commonwealth of Section 3a compliance costs incurred by municipalities does not satisfy the requirements of the local mandate law. As with all determinations, DLM cautions that its conclusion is based on DLM's interpretation, application of current law and judicial precedent and according is subject to legislative or regulatory changes or judicial determination. As you may be aware, there continues to be pending litigation regarding MBTA Communities Act between various municipalities in the Commonwealth. Such litigation may ultimately impact determination of whether the Act is an unfunded mandate and/or the parameters of the costs imposed by the Act. In the meantime, DLM's determination uniformly applies to all MBTA communities regardless of whether an individual MBTA community requests a determination from DLM. Notwithstanding the outcome of the pending litigation, DLM needs additional time to collect data from all MBTA communities in order to determine the local annual financial effect for a period of not less than three years of the Act pursuant to local mandate law. Accordingly, DLM requests a waiver from the Town of Marshfield of the 60-day timeline under the local mandate law. Regarding the financial effect determination, we would appreciate a response via email at your earliest convenience. Sincerely, Sonia J. Kwan, Senior Legal Counsel, Division of Local Mandates. So, Peter, upon reading that, and my thoughts on it, the, they have to go through all the communities once this is filed, right? So, so when you have that many communities, they just don't have the manpower to do it all in one. So they need some extra time to get all the information in each community in regards to making a good faith assessment, right?
They're, they're under, they have a statutory obligation to, under normal circumstances, provide a recommendation within 60 days. They're being swamped with these requests by other communities. And so they're asking for more time to do a formal review of the Town of Marshfield's request. That, I see no harm in providing them the waiver to extend the time primarily because they've pretty much telegraphed their punch and already saying that it's an unfunded local mandate in their assessment in other communities. I see no reason why they won't make the same determination for the Town of Marshfield. It'll just be a different amount of money that the mandate that they identify will be because it's different for each community. But they're just asking for a little bit more time to, I think, come down with a decision that will be in the town's favor. So I don't see any harm in granting the waiver.
So I did a little in regards to Chapter 29, Section 29(c) of state law, certain laws, rules, et cetera relating to costs or assessments effective only by vote of acceptance or appropriation, written notice requesting termination, class actions. And it says, "Any law taking effect on or after January 1, 1981, granting or increasing exemptions from local taxation shall be effective in any city or town only if the general court at the same session in which such law is enacted provides by general law and the appropriation payment from the Commonwealth to each city and town and/or, excuse me, of any loss of tax resulted from such exemption." And then it goes on, it's a few pages long. I don't know if you can really answer this, but it's something that I've questioned in regards to this. And this unfunded, this law here has been around for quite a long time, it seems like. And I'm just wondering with the, all the talk of unfunded mandates that are going around right now between the local government, especially within the schools. It's like, this is like kind of the first I've heard of it. Do you know why, like, nobody's really brought this up in regards to other matters? In regards to past legislation that was enacted that would put financial pressure on communities in regards to obligations without some kind of funding mechanism towards it from the state? Even though it is coming from the taxpayers. But I would imagine coming from the state would be a little more broad-based in regards to the financial obligations I would look at.
So they routinely field questions about unfunded mandates from municipalities annually. You don't hear about it because usually they toss them. You know, they say that they're not finding an unfunded mandate.
Okay, so.
But in this case, they already have.
Okay, so do, and you mentioned that. So when they've made a determination in regards to certain things that we may look at as unfunded mandates, do we have a list of what they consider as unfunded mandates?
No, what we've, what the town has filed a request to find the MBTA zoning requirement to be an unfunded mandate on this municipality.
No, no, I think you misunderstand me possibly. So if, if DLM has made, not MBTA, but in general, other determinations on unfunded mandate requests.
Yep.
Do we have a list of what they ruled on?
No, but I can get it for you.
Yeah, I would say that, I think that'd be something that, as a community.
Probably on their website, I'll find it for you.
Okay. Is there anything else, is there anything else you wanted added on?
No, I just, I think this is pretty much, you know, pro forma. You know, it's, it's, they're going to find, Marshfield has been, you know, put upon with an unfunded mandate because they found that in other communities in similar standing. They're just going to identify what they identify as the cost of that mandate in Marshfield. And they need more time.
Yeah, it's unbelievable. On page three, and it is clearly highlighted in the, when you print it out or see it online, letter D, "The Superior Court shall determine the amount of deficiency, if any, and shall order that said city or town be exempt from such general or special law or rule or regulation of any administrative agency until the Commonwealth shall reimburse such city or town the amount of said deficiency or additional costs or shall repeal such exemption from local taxation." So either way, even what DLM comes up with, it sounds like it may still have to go through the courts.
It will go through the courts. Yeah, the state, whatever the auditor finds, the state will probably appeal and it'll end up in court. But I think the auditor has already shown. the auditor has already shown, um, has tipped its hand that they're, they're finding this as an unfunded mandate.
Okay. Steve, would you like to add any comments?
Yes, please.
Go for it.
Yeah, so just as a quick timeline recap, I forget the original town that did this, but they wrote a letter to the state auditor asking that she find the MBTA Communities Act as an unfunded mandate, and she found that it was. So her office didn't rule that it was unconstitutional, but they did rule that it was an unfunded mandate. And so what we did a few months ago as a board was, we did three things, and we were one of the first towns in the whole state to do this and, and hop on board, is we sent a letter requesting that the state auditor make a determination whether the MBTA Communities Act was an unfunded mandate for the Town of Marshfield. The second is, we went to court challenging this as an unfunded mandate, and we were one of the first towns to do that. And then third, we sent a letter to our state delegation requesting that they exempt us from the MBTA Communities Act compliance because it's an unfunded mandate, or that they request the state provide the funding for the cost of us to get into compliance. And so that's where we stand right now, and as Peter explained, the state auditor's office is just asking for more time to crunch the numbers and things of that nature. So, um, from that perspective, it's just a straightforward vote to, to give them more time.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you. Trish? You all good? Okay, uh, so we'll move to, uh, a vote on this, I would say.
Yes, we'll vote on it.
So, um, the, in regards to it, uh, I'm just trying to think, move that the select board vote to grant the waiver extending the time, I said, that's the motion. So, uh, anybody want to second this?
Second.
Um, so what do we do? Do the, the vote?
So, yeah, motion's been made and seconded, just call for the vote.
Yeah, so, uh, the motion, "Move that the select board vote to grant the waiver extending the time for the state auditor to determine the extent of the unfunded mandate," asked, uh, was it TA, meaning Town Administrator?
Yep.
Or what's the TC?
Town Council.
Town Council, "to notify the auditor's office." Uh, this is requiring a majority vote, according to what I have here, so, um, motion is hereby put forward. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
I say aye.
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 Thank you. Let's see here, um... Is there anybody here that's here to speak on behalf of a nautical that we have up here at all? Okay. Um, "Discussion and vote on potential appointment of an elderly and disabled tax committee." Um, on this one, I don't believe I had any paperwork in it, so is this just something you're highlighting to us, Peter, or?
Sure, there was a recent, at the last town meeting, a tax aid committee was established by town meeting vote. It would consist of five members, two are automatic, the treasurer-collector, and the chair of the Board of Assessors. You would need three other, uh, people to serve. I don't know if you have anybody in mind that you want to serve on that, if you want to just, at this point, put out that we are seeking applications for the committee and vote on it at a, at a later time. I think that would be appropriate since it's just been adopted within the last week.
Yeah, when I was reading the, uh, the motions, I'm like, well, we haven't got a chance to put like a search committee or anybody to put in for us. I was thinking, we're ahead of ourselves on this one.
Right, you just make a public invitation, um, that, you know, we're setting up this committee, the purpose of it is to provide assistance to people that are identified in, in the town needing assistance, uh, and, and paying their taxes, and that, uh, we're looking for three members.
Yeah, so this is part of, um, what Ms. Lynn Phillips put forward in regards to adding a, um, uh, a box, I guess you could say, you could check off to pay...
Volunteer.
A doll, a five dollars, $10 towards this committee, uh, or towards, uh, offset any of the taxes. Um, and, uh, and it requires a board to oversee it by Mass General Laws and everything like that. So, um, yeah, I would just like to say, if anybody's interested out there in serving on this, um, on this tax aid committee, uh, please, uh, either want to submit your name or pass on to anybody else that has an interest in it. Um, and how many, what's the maximum, what do we need for, is it three people? I think it's two, two that's already, um, the treasurer-collector and the chair of the Board of Assessors, and then there's three other pers, three other residents.
Correct.
Right, so, uh, so at least three people, if anybody knows. Um, so that will be, so there's no vote necessary on that.
Correct.
Um, "Discussion and vote on request for permission to waive building apartment fees relative to work at Olympia Road Stormwater Pumps." Um, I think that's pretty, uh, self-understanding. Do you have anything to add to that, Steve?
Uh, just one thing, Trish, be ready to see a million more of these.
Oh, yeah. I thought it out.
Yeah, and it's just, it's pretty standard, we're just not got, not gonna charge ourselves a permit fee for work that we're doing on the town, so that's pretty much all it is, like Eric said, it's pretty straightforward.
Nice of us.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't. Thank you.
That's it. All right, uh, I'm gonna motion to, um, what's this, uh, "This is a DPW project, exemptions reduce the cost, uh, to the town. Uh, the motion moved that the select board, uh, vote to approve the waiver of all building department fees relating to work at the Olympia Road Stormwater Pumps." Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm gonna vote aye.
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 Thank you. Um, let's see, number six. Discussion vote on application for a temporary liquor license, New England Beekeeping Supplies. So on this, uh, do I have to read everything that's on it, Peter, in regards to the details of, uh, the, the application?
That's up to you, it's, it's a license to sell meat at Marshfield Fair, and it's within your authority to, to grant a temporary license for 10 days.
But for public record and all that, it should be read off?
No, you can't, yeah, sure.
So, uh, name of applicant, I should say public record law if it fell into that, but, uh, Richard D., the name of applicant is Richard D. Riol, I believe it is. Uh, name of business, New England Beekeeping Supplies, uh, has a mailing address, seven Locusts, Abtinsborough, Mass, 01879. Um, the date of event is August 15th through the 24th, 2025. Hours of event, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Location of event, 140 Main Street, Route 3(a), Marshfield, Mass, 02050. Description of event, uh, Marshfield Agricultural Fair, uh, wine and malt beverages, uh, copy of liquor liability insurance, name of the town is an additionally insured, copy of tip certification, detail written narrative. Uh, this event will be held outdoors. Uh, it is signed by Richard Riol on 4/25. And I think everything else, to me, when I went through this, looked good in regards to insurance and, and tip, tip certification. And also, I believe, uh, the Marshfield Fire may have put there, uh, actually, it's not in there, so probably because it's on, uh, private property, I don't think there's any issues. Uh, Steve, would you like to comment on it, or?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, thank you. Trish?
I'm good, thanks.
You're good as well? Okay. Um, let's see here, "Motion, move that the select board vote to grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Richard Riol, New England Beekeeping Supplies for the duration of the Marshfield Fair from August 15th through August 24th, 2025, at the Marshfield Fairgrounds, subject to proof of liquor liability insurance and approval of Marshfield Police Department." Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Um, next, number eight, "Discussion and vote on application of temporary entertainment license, North River Arts Society."
Yeah, you skipped over one. You got the, uh, Marshfield Hills General Store, temporary liquor license.
Oh, all right, you know something, I'll go back, I can go through that one. Uh, where am I here? Yep, I think I checked it off by accident, that's why. Uh, "Discussion and vote on application for temporary liquor license, Marshfield Hills General Store. Uh, name of applicant, Tish Adams, I think it is. Name of business organization, Marshfield Hills General Store. Um, mailing address, PO Box 313, Marshfield Hills, Mass, 02051. Date of event, May 24th and 25th. Hours of event, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Location of event, 165 Prospect Street. Description of event, North River Arts Festival. Uh, wine and malt beverages only. Uh, copy of liquor liability insurance, name of town of Marshfield, additionally insured, uh, checked off, mailed separately. Uh, copy of tip certification for all servers. Um, detail written event narrative. Uh, store offers a barbecue with beer, wine as parts of North River Arts Festival. Uh, this event will be held outdoors, was signed off. Um, I think the insurance end of it was, looked good, and, um, tips part, and I believe there's a sketch here that's attached to it in regards to how they're gonna lay it out. Um, and the, I believe police and fire, uh, have no issues with this. Um, I think there was a comment here from licensed supervisor, Mass General Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Um, "Your board can issue a one-day license for wine and malt and whatever the board likes, however, they cannot, they cannot use their existing inventory. Uh, this would be a separate license, and the alcohol would need to come from an authorized store separate from their existing inventory orders." Uh, the best way to think about it is if this one-day license or the existing license have no association, nothing to do with others. So would that be standing with this, uh, approval? Peter?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so the motion is, "Move that the select board vote to grant a temporary beer and wine to Tish Adams, Marshfield Hills General Store for annual North River Arts Society..." Oh, you know something, I forgot, my apologies. Did you have any comments, Steve?
No, thank you.
Did you have any comments, Trish?
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, Tish Ad, let me start out, "Move the select board vote to grant a temporary beer and wine to Tish Adams, Marshfield Hills General Store for annual North River Arts Society Festival of the Arts on May 24th and 25th, 2025, at the Marshfield Hills General Store, subject to proof of liability insurance and approval of Marshfield Police Department." Um, do I have a second?
Second.
I vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Um, all right, now on to number eight, which would be the discussion vote on application for temporary entertainment license, North River Arts Society. Uh, name of applicant, North River Arts Society, address, 157 Old Main Street, Marshfield Hills, Mass. Location of event, 157 Old Hill, Old Main Street, uh, Marshfield, Mass. Uh, description of event, indoor/outdoor arts festival. Dates and time of event, May 23rd, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. May 24th and 25th, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Uh, type of entertain, type of entertainment applying for, dancing by patrons, live music, theatrical exhibition, dancing by entertainers, amplification system. Uh, estimate the number of persons who will attend, approximately, say, 3,000, um, both indoor/outdoor. Uh, will there be a tent? Yes. Will there be food served at this event? Yes. Um, and I believe the police and fire, uh, have no issues with this. Um, do you have anything to add to this, Steve?
No, thank you.
Trish, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
So, I will motion, um, "Move that the select board vote to grant a temporary entertainment license to the North River Arts Society for dancing by patrons, live music, theatrical exhibition, dancing by entertainers, amplification system on May 23rd, 2025, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. May 24th and 25th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 157 Old Main Street, subject to approval of Marshfield Police Department, Marshall Fire Department, Building Department, and Board of Health." Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Number nine, "Discussion and vote on application for temporary entertainment license, Circus Smirkus." Uh, name of applicant, Circus Bond, DBA if any, Circus Smirkus. Address of applicant, 1 Circus Road, Greensboro, Vermont, 05841. Location of event, Marshfield Fairgrounds. Event description, Circus Smirkus 2025 Big Top Tour. Dates and time, 7/29/25, 11:00 a.m., uh, and 7:00 p.m. Should it be, Peter, should I say 11:00 a.m. to 7:00?
To 7:00 p.m.
Yeah. Um, and then 7:30, 25, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Uh, type of entertainment applying for, theatrical exhibition, dancing by entertainers, amplification system, recorded music. Uh, estimated number of patrons, 2,600 roughly. Um, outdoors, will there be a tent? Yes. Will there be food served? Yes. Police and fire look good on this. Um, fire will look, be looking for one fire watch. Uh, when they say performance, meaning like one show, right, for the fire, not like different performances that are going on, right?
Yeah, it's, it's just, uh, yeah, it's in the, you know, broader sense of the word.
Um, okay, uh, you have anything to add, Steve?
It sounds like they couldn't think of a word that rhymes with circus.
Yeah, correct. I would, I can go with that, yes. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Trish, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Good, okay. Um, so the motion here is, is, uh, "Move that the select board vote to grant a temporary entertainment license, the Circus Bond DBA Circus Smirkus for theatrical exhibition, dancing by entertainers, recorded music, and amplification at the Circus Smirkus 2025 Big Top Tour at the Marshfield Fairgrounds on July 29th and 30th, 2025, at 11:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Subject to positive...
7:00 p.m.
Yes, excuse, thank you, Peter. Two, 11:00 a.m. to...
7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m. Subject to positive recommendations from building, police, and fire departments." Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Discussion vote on application for temporary entertainment license, Friends of the Marshfields, uh, Mass Animal Shelter. Name of applicant, Vicki Lynch, DBA, Friends of Marshfield, um, Mass Animal Shelter. Uh, address of applicant, 40 Western Farm, Marshfield, Mass. Uh, location of event, Wrexham Beach Parking Lot. Event description, um, series of four, was it, is that free fundraising concert?
Yeah, four fundraising concerts at Wrexham Beach.
What's the one, what's the word above fundraising? Are they trying to slip that in, or?
Free.
It's...
Free.
Free, it is free, right? Series of four free fundraising concerts?
Yeah, they're passing ahead.
Uh, late to the Leon Street Rockers. Uh, date and time of event, June 22nd, 2025, 4/2, 7:00 p.m. No rain date. July 19th, 2025, 6/2, 8:00 p.m. Uh, rain date, July 25th, 2025. August 16th, 2025, 6/2, 8:00 p.m. Rain date, 8/23/25. And September 6th, 2025. Rain date, September 13th, 2025, 6 to 8:00 p.m. Um, types of entertainment, dancing by patrons, live music. Estimate the number of patron, persons who will attend, 50 to 100, depending on weather. Um, it's outdoor, will there be a tent? No. Will there be food at the event? No. Um, homes and businesses sufficiently far away from the lot. Uh, police doesn't have any issues, it looks like, uh, and, uh, no issues from fire, so, uh, I think we're good on that. Uh, Steve, do you have any comments?
Yes, just one quickly.
Absolutely.
The reason it's a free fundraising concert is because of state laws, you can't solicit donations on town property, so basically what they do is they put out a jar, and it's a, you know, donate if you want to.
Oh, so it's, uh, yeah, you know what, you can't be compelled to do it, so put the jar out, and it kind of compels you to put something in, right?
Exactly, yeah.
I get that, absolutely. Trish, do you have any, uh?
No.
All right, so, um, the motion is, uh, "Move that the select board vote to grant a temporary entertainment license to Vicki Lynch, Friends of Marshfield, Mass, Animal Shelter Incorporated, for a series of four free," I think we have the, have the word "free" in there, right? "Fundraising concerts at the Wrexham Beach Parking Lot on June 22nd, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Uh, no rain date. July 19th, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Uh, rain date, 7/25/25. August 16th, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m." August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, from six PM to eight PM. Rain date, eight twenty-three, twenty-five. And September sixth, twenty-twenty-five, from six PM, eight PM. Rain date, nine thirteen, twenty-five. Subject to positive recommendations from the Beach Department and Marshall Police and Fire Departments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Let's see here. Okay, so now we're going with the donations. Discussion vote on request permission to accept two donations, counsel on aging.
I had a question.
Oh, we can't take them, can't take any questions.
Oh, you can't?
No, sorry.
Okay.
Apologize for that.
Good enough.
See, we have a donation from E. Rogers. For fifty dollars for tax prep donation. And Joan M. Burke, fifty dollars for tax prep donation. So. The motion, oh, do you have any comments, Steve?
I do not, thank you for asking.
Do you have any comments, Trish?
No, thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for the donation from E. Rogers and Joan M. Burke. Move that the select board vote to accept two gifts to the Council of Aging from E. Rogers and Joan M. Burke with gratitude to the donors. So do I have a second on that?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. So this is. Discussion vote on request of permission to accept two donations, veteran services. Permission to accept donation of five hundred mini flags valued at one hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Town of Marshfield Veteran Services request permission to accept donation of five hundred mini flags valued at one hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-five cents from the members of the Vietnam Veterans Huey Float Group. Sincerely Karen L. Paulette, Veterans, Director of Veterans and Lisa Potts, Assistant Director of Veteran Services. Do we have any comments, Steve?
Appreciate the donations.
Absolutely. Trish?
I'm good, thank you.
Yes, I wanna say thank you to those for the donations. The motion is move that the select board vote to accept two gifts from the town's Veteran Services from Vietnam Veterans Huey Float Group and Mr. and Mrs. David Murray with gratitude to the donors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Discussion of vote on request permission to accept donation, Ventures Library. On behalf of the Ventures Memorial Library, I am writing to formally request your acceptance of generous one hundred dollar donation from John and Gail Martel. We are sincerely grateful for contributions like this, which enable the library to provide resources and materials that might otherwise be beyond our reach. Their support helps us better serve the needs of the community. Thank you for consideration, warm regards, Cindy J. Marku. Any comments, Steve?
No, thank you.
Trish?
I'm good, thank you.
Just wanna say thank you to John and Gail Martel for that generous donation. The motion, move that the select board vote to accept a gift, accept a gift to the town's Ventures Library from John and Gail Martel with gratitude to the donors. So second that?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Discussion vote request for permission to accept donation, Animal Control. This letter serves as an official request to accept the donation in the cash amount of one hundred and twenty-two dollars, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents by Taylor Prue. These funds will be directly be deposited into our department's donation account and will go directly towards the care of the animals housed at the Marshall Animal Shelter, cared for by Marshall Animal Control Officers. Any questions, Steve?
No, thank you.
Trish?
I'm good, thank you.
I wanna say thank you to Taylor Prue for the donation. And do I have a second?
Second.
The move that the select board to vote to accept a gift to the town's Animal Control Department from Taylor Prue with gratitude to the donor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion of vote on application for annual pedals license, the Me Thai Cuisine. Name of applicant, Robert Ball, address sixty Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. Name of business, the Me Thai Cuisine. Type of business, restaurant, food trailer, hours of operation, ten AM to nine PM. Other information, this would be for eighteen-foot food trailer. We would also, we also own a restaurant in downtown Plymouth. This was signed at four sixteen twenty-five. It's pretty basic. Do you have any questions or concerns, Steve?
No, thank you.
Trish, do you have any questions or concerns? Okay. The motion is that the select board vote to grant an annual pedals license at the Me Thai Cuisine, subject to approval of Board of Health, background check, state pedals license and payment of a one hundred dollar fee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Discussion of vote on application for annual fortune teller's license, Stephanie De Metro, DBA Crystal Hallings, four sixty-eight Plain Street. So this is pretty much, it was a, so it's an application for a terror card mediation. The hours of operation appear to be Monday through Friday, eleven AM to four PM, excluding holidays. She has a walk-in business. She is the sole proprietor of the partnership and has no employees working for me in any capacity. Message from Andrew, I have no issues with her getting her fortune teller license at this point. She has a sign permit and fixed the sign. She cannot advertise on her sign for fortune teller at this location because of the zoning statutes, but she can certainly get her license. If I'm reading this correctly, she has a ZBA hearing coming up, Peter?
Correct, she's got one that's scheduled in June.
And what is that for, exactly?
Probably a variance relating to either her signage or, or whether to allow this function in, in the zone that she's currently in. It's one or the other.
So I mean.
You can make.
If we approve this, then.
You can improve, you can improve the license conditioned on, on subject, you know, you can condition on, on ZBA approval or you can do it, you know, without that, but probably the cleaner one is, is to make it.
Condition on the ZBA approval?
Yeah.
Steve, do you have any questions or concerns on this?
Yes, please. So if it's helpful context, it's not a new business. It's been around for a few years. And, you know, we could have saved a lot of people, a lot of stress if we consulted her before the election.
I don't know if I should ask about that or not, but. Trish, do you have any questions or concerns?
Just about the zoning, does it say no fortune teller's license there?
Probably doesn't, it may be, I, I, I don't know, I can find out for you what the zoning issue is, I'd be happy to do it, but it's probably whether or not you can conduct a business in that zone. I'll, I'll find out.
Isn't it right next door to the animal hospital?
It is, yep.
Yeah, so you're probably, they're probably okay. I'll find out what it is.
I was just curious.
It could also be about the sign.
Okay.
That, that might be it because we do have very strange sign bylaws in Marshfield.
Okay.
So that, yes, that should be something we should tackle at some point, but it's never, never gone well.
All right, so, I mean, are you too good with the condition on ZBA approval? Do you wanna add something onto the conditions or where you're good with the way it currently stands?
I'm good with the clean, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so both of you all said, you guys see your comments on that?
Thank you, yep.
So the motion is move that the select board vote to grant annual fortune teller's license to Stephanie De Metro to be used at the premises at four sixty-eight Plain Street. Said license is personal to Mrs. De Metro and cannot be assigned. We will put in a condition on it, this is pending zoning board of appeals approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Discussion vote on appointing Ken Pike as delegate for the Marshall Council on Aging to the OCS Board of Directors. I'm just gonna read the letter here. Each year, Old Colony Elder Services sends a letter to the select board requesting appointment of a delegate for the Marshall Council on Aging to the OCS Board of Directors. The COA Council on Aging Board met on April sixteen, twenty-twenty-five, in voting unanimously to recommend Ken Pike, COA staff member to, to the select board to once again fill the position of delegate to the OCES Board for the new fiscal year of twenty-twenty-six. We have spoken with Ken Pike and he has graciously agreed to serve as delegate to OCS Board once again. Mr. Pike is a social service coordinator and social worker at the Council of Aging. His job is very closely aligned with the services and promises, programs at OCS. Could you put this on the select board agenda for a vote and kindly respond in writing to OCS as to your decision? Please don't hesitate to call if you have any further questions. Steve, do you have any questions or concerns?
I am all good, thank you.
Trish? Okay. The motion for this. Move that the select board vote to appoint Ken Pike as delegate from the Marshall Council on Aging to the OCES Board of Directors, Council on Aging for a one-year term from July first, twenty-twenty-five, through July thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The next one, discussion of vote on request for permission to hold fourth biannual block party at Winslow Cemetery Road, Presidential Circle, Constantine Drive and Emmanuel Road on June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, from three thirty PM to eight o'clock PM, with weather date of June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. I think I pretty much covered everything in the opening there, but they do have some things. The section, the selected section of roadway is the least traveled in the neighborhood and only involves three homes. The owners of those homes will be in attendance. There will be orange cones at the second corner of Presidential Circle and WCA in the corner of Presidential Circle and Emmanuel Road. Travel to the Daniel Webster Sanctuary and the Winslow Cemetery will not be impacted. We understand that containers of alcohol beverages are not allowed on the public roadway. That the road must be accessible to emergency and delivery vehicles at all times. And that the road cannot be roped off. We have safety cones we can put down and be easily moved if necessary. That is from Paul Macalea. Fire and police have no issues. Steve, do you have any comments or concerns?
No, thank you.
Trish, do you have any comments or concerns?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so the motion as stated. Move that the select board vote to grant approval for an annual block party at Winslow Cemetery Road, Presidential Circle, Constantine Drive and Emmanuel Road on June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, from three thirty PM to eight PM, with a weather date of June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Number nineteen, discussion and vote on request permission to hold yoga classes on Wrexham Beach on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays at seven AM, starting at June seventeen, twenty-twenty-five and ended on September first, twenty-twenty-five, Melissa McKim. Oh, you know what, I had a question on this, Peter. Where she's using town, town property, does she need to have a license and/or insurance?
It's, it's at the discretion of the board based on the activity. If you wanna require them to have insurance in exchange for the use of town property or naming that the town is a third-party insured, you could do that.
What's your recommendation?
I don't know what the precedent is here for that, whether it's been required in the past or not, but you know, in previous situations where like someone is using a town lake for paddleboard lessons or something like that, it's been required. Yoga is like a, quite frankly, not something in which I engage very frequently.
I'm with you on that one.
So I think it can, can pose someone like me some dangers, but to others, it can be seen as a non, yeah, threatening activity.
I mean, I just don't wanna, I mean, I'd be more than happy to allow them to use it. You know, that's the whole thing is that we have all these other people that request permission to use town property and require insurance. And I would say mainly probably because it's a big event and there's alcohol generally involved and all that, but I'm just, even though it seems like a harmless issue here, that was, was one of my concerns in regards to it is, is we.
Kate.
Let's be honest, if something happens, I guess the question would be asked, if something happened to somebody there and they're not insured or we're not on their insurance, I mean, what is the worst?
So it hasn't been done in the past, is she charging for this?
I'm not sure, I know the other one, there's another, the next action item is very similar except it's not for the Harvard Beach, and I know he doesn't charge, he asks for donations for the food pantry. Melissa.
Yeah, so, you know, if, if it were a commercial activity, I would, I would want it.
She does have unplugged yoga in town, she owns a business owner, so I'm sure she doesn't charge.
Yeah, so, yeah, if she's charging, we should require insurance.
Okay, so we should, should we put that as a condition that she's charging, that she is through?
Yeah. She's required to, to provide a certificate of insurance identifying the town as a third-party insurer.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if charging a fee?
Yep.
Insurance certificate will be required?
Yes.
Required as town. Town to be, would you say, Kate, as town to be added to?
Naming the town as additional.
Naming the town, why, this was a, naming town as additional. Additional to policy? Okay. I think that's all I have. Steve, do you have any questions or concerns?
I don't, I think we've seen this in the Green Harbor one, every year I've been on the board and there's never been an issue, so I'm okay to move forward.
With the conditions?
I'm fine with the condition for the first one, the second one, since it's.
We could talk about that after.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
It's, Trish, are you good?
I agree.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna motion. Move that the select board vote to grant approval for Melissa McKim to hold yoga classes on Wrexham Beach. Location approved by Beach Commissioner and Lieutenant Sullivan on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays and Saturdays at seven AM from June seventeen, twenty-twenty-five through September first, twenty-twenty-five, subject to approval from the Beach Department. With the condition of, if Melissa McKim is charging a fee, that a, that an insurance certificate be required, naming the town as an additional, as an additional to the policy. naming the town as an additional, uh, as an additional, uh, to the policy. That sound good to everybody? Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, okay, so number twenty, I think there's going to be a little discussion here as well. I will read off, uh, discussion and vote and request permission to hold yoga classes on Green Harbor Beach on Thursdays and Saturdays at eight AM and Sundays at seven thirty AM, starting on June nineteenth, twenty five, and ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Bill Salvatell. So, Mr. Salvatell gives a little background here. Uh, a little history of my yoga beach mission. I began this journey in the summer of twenty sixteen, hoping to share the gift of peaceful mindful yoga to all ages and abilities. From June to early September, folks from, um, the social came and practiced their yoga. Every year, our classes grew from a handful to sometimes over fifty folks coming four days a week to expand their practice. Best of all, this is and has always been a free event. I only ask for some non-partial food items for the local food pantry. Every week, you may, uh, have seen postings of full shopping carts on Facebook. I drop off a shopping cart full of the much-needed groceries, uh, for our neighbors in need at the Marshall Food Pantry. The yogis have been extremely generous. Uh, with your blessings, I plan to continue this mission as we enter our ninth year. Even though my wife and I plan on moving to South Carolina to be closer to our son, I hope to have some time teaching yoga and bring in a Marshall resident to take over this endeavor. She will be certified in teaching and have insurance. This coming Sunday, I plan to have classes only on Thursday and Saturday at eight AM Sunday and would be a different time, seven thirty. If we have a super moon, I ask for yoga on those nights. It would be one or two evenings during the summer months, and I would let you know ahead of time if they were to be scheduled. Uh, this year, I hope to begin yoga a bit later in June, possibly the nineteenth or twenty-sixth, with the end date early September. I also ask permission for the folks who drive and don't have beach stickers and those who come from other towns to park in the beach street lot during yoga. We would all be off the lot before nine AM. I look forward to hearing back at your earliest convenience. Many thanks and God bless. So. I think he's asked for a little bit more than what, what is on the, the motion, is what I'm seeing here if I'm correct. So, he's asking if we have a super moon. He's looking for
Better energy.
Those nights. So Sat- so Saturday at eight, so he's looking for the Saturday and Sunday at a specific time? Would I be looking at that right?
Thursday and Saturday at eight AM, Sunday at seven thirty. And then if it's a super moon, it would be at night.
Does, should he come back with the super moon request?
As I was saying, let's see, I would let you know ahead of time.
So just focus on what we have now, and if he wants to do it on, then come back. All right, let's do that. Uh, all right, I guess the, the thing I brought when we asked the previous one is insurance, so we're, uh, Steve, I, I guess you have some thoughts on that, so?
Uh, sure, yeah, so there's a recreational use statute that basically protects the town, so if you're using like town on land, like the beach or a basketball court or something like that, and you get hurt, um, the town is protected, so you can't sue them if you, you know, tear your ACL playing basketball in a town court.
Yep.
So, um, the fact that he's doing the yoga for free and he's not charging anything, you know, we would be protected if there were to be an injury.
Okay, uh, I agree with you on the charging bit. Um, I don't know, does, does a donation count as a charge, or?
No.
No, okay. Um, all right, uh, Trish, you have it, you're good? Okay. Um, all right, so let's, uh, go with as the, uh, the motion calls for it, and if he wants to do something on a, uh, super moon night, um, then I have to, uh, request permission on it. So, uh, the move that the select board vote to grant approval for Bill Salvatell to hold yoga classes on Green Harbor Beach on Thursdays and Saturdays at eight AM and Sundays at seven thirty AM, from June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, subject to the approval from the Beach Department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Thank you, both. Um. Okay, oh, we have, uh, two appointments. Um, Mr. Hackett is the first one. Um, for the Energy Committee, uh, a little background on Mr. Hackett, Mr., uh, actually Colin Hackett. Uh, two thousand and six graduate, Worcester Academy, Associate Degree in Business Administration, Mass. Sawyer, CC, five-year electrician apprentice, local one oh three, career electrician, worked in large project in Boston's, uh, in Seaport District in Cambridge for JM Brown and Murphy Electric. Uh, please consider my application experience to serve, learn, and contribute. I have a deep passion for my career choice as an apprentice and a professional licensed electrician. I want to share my knowledge with the committee to ensure that the decisions that will be made are in compliance with federal, state, and local codes. Additionally, in consideration of environmental and consumer needs, in advance of your consideration. Thank you, Colin Hackett. Um, is Mr. Colin Hackett here? Okay, um, I did talk to Colin on this, and he seemed like a, a real good, uh, person for this choice in regards to his background and everything. Um, do you have any questions or concerns, Steve?
No, I think you're right, he has a good background for it.
Okay. Trish, do you have any?
Agreed, I agree.
Okay, okay. Um, so, um, the motion, move that the select board vote to appoint Colin Hackett to the Energy Committee. I think that might be it, so let me just flip over to make sure. Uh, yes, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 And, um, the next one is a discussion and vote on the appointment of Energy Committee Joseph Hackett. Mr. Hackett is a Fifty-three Ridge Road, uh, taught math for ten years in denim public schools, worked in nuclear power generation, uh, industry at Stone and Webster, worked in electronics industry at Teradyne in Boston. And that's it, and I did speak to Mr. Hackett as well. Uh, he seems very qualified for this position as well as his son. Um, Steve, any questions or concerns you want to?
Uh, no, you touched on it pretty well, he's an engineer, worked in nuclear power, so it looks like it'll be a great fit. And if anybody was worried about the application earlier being time-sensitive, the next super moon isn't until November fifth.
Good, well, thank you for looking that up.
Anybody doing yoga in November on a beach, good luck for them.
Uh, Trish, do you have anything?
I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, so the motion that stands, move that the select board vote to appoint Joseph Hackett to the Energy Committee. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's see, we got a vote to accept the minutes. Actually, open session minute. You know something, he has a motion for open session, so, uh, are we not taking up executive session minutes?
We're going to do those in, we have an executive session, so.
Oh, so you're going to vote to it, you're going to vote to it in the executive session? All right. All right, um, so this is you and I, Steve, uh, since these last, uh, ones. So, uh, the motion will be move-
Can you say that, um, sorry, Trish can't vote on these?
Yeah, she's allowed to vote, uh, if she's comfortable with it, if you've had an opportunity to review the minutes. If you want to abstain, you're free to abstain as well.
Is that it? Okay. The motion, uh, move that the select board vote to approve open session meeting minutes for March tenth, twenty twenty-five, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, April ninth, twenty twenty-five, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, thank you. Um, that takes care of those matters. I believe that is a wrap on our agenda. Uh, I want to thank, thank you to Steve, Trish, Peter, and Kate, and everybody that, that's in attendance, uh, now and before. And, um, so, uh, I guess I got to make a motion to close.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
You do, but just one thing I thought would be good to kind of put on the radar.
Yeah.
Is I spoke to Town Council earlier, and our next meeting isn't until the nineteenth, but he recommended that we get together sooner than that to do two things. The first would be to have an open meeting where we discuss what we want to do for the search process for a new town administrator, just because the clock's ticking a little bit. You know, probably we have Peter for four months in total, and we're almost one month in, and it'll probably take a good amount of time, whatever we decide to do.
Yeah.
And then also at that same meeting to do an executive session for updates on two cases that we have pending right now in court. Um, so, I don't know.
I think, I'll be honest with you, Bob, you are right, so that was my thinking, just depending on the status, but I do think that, um, for the time being going forward, we may have to have a little more meeting business, uh, than, than usually we do on that.
We could do a meeting next week if the, if people are available.
I mean, what's, I mean, let's say we couldn't do it Monday just for say, are you flexible on other nights?
Yep.
Sort of say, and how about you, Trish?
It varies, just because of school things.
Yeah, do we want to get home and send some dates and email Kate and, and Jenner and Peter?
Well, let's be honest, I guess we'll put together a, an agenda in regards to what, uh, what should be discussed, and then, um, and I guess Peter will send it out, and then we can just get some feedback. If by chance it can't be done on a Monday, it has to be somewhere else, then that's when everybody's going to, get back to Peter and, and let, let the rest of us know in regards to the status of that. So, are you good with that, Trish?
I'm good with that.
All right.
Can I ask you a question? What about these board vacancies, what, it says discussion items, do we not discuss those?
I mean, we can, we can, we can publicly announce it if you want, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, so.
You'll, uh, you'll see that in your binder by default for each meeting?
Yeah.
Just to kind of like keep it on your radar if you know someone who might be interested.
I mean, since she brought up board vacancies, Advisory Board, one vacancy, Agriculture Commission, one vacancy, Capital Budget Committee, one vacancy, Energy Committee, well, there was three, now there's going to be one. Planning for Public Information Committee, two vacancies, Recreation Commission, one vacancy, Waterways Commission, one vacancy, so.
Okay.
That's that, so, uh, all right, so, um, motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Eric, any chance I can make public comment?
I just, someone else, I mean, Peter, where am I on doing this?
We've already, we had the public comment period.
I'll sit on the chair.
It's up to you.
I just wanted to say congratulations to new positions and to Trish, but also comment to Mr. Moren. I've attended a fair amount of these, uh, sessions. This is the first time I've ever seen a town administrator give something to the, uh, select board and give them pause to look at it and consider it. It's a, from, from a, from a town resident, it's a nice perspective to have them have that opportunity. I haven't seen it in the past, appreciate it, and I welcome the board.
You and I didn't rehearse this, right?
No, we didn't.
All right, thank you, thank you very much, it was very kind.
You want to chat, you, you spoke, you want to say something?
I can speak after, doesn't want to hang everybody up. I just had a question, what you responded to, uh, Ken Farrell, Stetson Road. Um, you had said that you can't charge admission on town property, so they had a gift, a jar out there to take donations?
Donation.
That's town property. Why does the Love Sefest charge admission on town property?
Yeah, they get a permit for it as a private event.
But you said you, you can't charge admission on town property.
I'll find out what the technical answer is for you.
Yeah, I just-
I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I bet there-
Fair enough.
I'll find out.
Yep, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let me start this whole thing over again. Do I have a, uh, a, a second to adjourn?
Yes, second.
Want to vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.